Oh, I think to start the meeting minutes thing.
Open the meeting Friday, April 5th, 2024. At 1:05, Porta Selectman Special Meeting, Highway Superintendent Candidates.
Person fell off. Whoever it was.
Oh, okay.
We've got a bunch of questions here that Aaron put together. Nine questions.
Should we announce first that the first person isn't here? So we're going to continue with this instead?
Oh, yeah, I can do that, but let's.
Okay.
About this first because there is no candidate here.
Yeah.
While we're waiting second candidate, the first candidate has withdrawn. About how we're going to do these questions, okay? Do split them up three, three and three?
Yeah, I mean, and there may be some additional ones that we got from.
We have two sets of questions that we can look at beside who wants to ask which. I think the chairman should go first, so we can choose the ones that you want to do first, and then we'll pick up from there.
Do one, three and five.
Those yours choices.
Oh, here I have them right here.
We have another set?
Yeah, you can have them. I can print more. I think I just like this one. Maybe I don't hold on. I'll get it for you though. Okay, right here. Your questions.
No, I get that one.
All the other ones? No, I'll go down. You have it? Okay. I'll do four, six and seven.
Is this from? Yep, four, six and seven. That leaves you.
Four, six.
Two, eight and nine. Is that okay with you?
Yeah. No, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
So four, six and seven, that leaves me two, eight and nine.
Two, eight and nine, yeah.
And then if we would look at there any over here. I, I think the first question is in the resumes.
Mm hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
I think. Yeah, some of these are part of the other ones.
Yeah.
Your experience managing a department, that's. Part of one of those questions.
A lot of these beginning ones we have.
Yep.
Yeah.
Here, but the ones on the bottom. Really specific.
Right.
That department.
Yeah, yeah.
Those might be the ones we'd want.
Yep, yep, were the ones he gives us the answers.
Yeah. This we wouldn't know.
And hopefully they don't challenge us on the.
Can I see that one, please? The second set of questions?
Yeah, I, I like the, the ones where he gives us the answers.
Yeah.
It helps.
Yep. But I think other than that, we can ascertain the top questions in our questions.
Yeah.
Yep. So there's what, four of those? If Don takes two and we take one, Lucy?
Of.
Of these bottom four.
Of the bottom four?
One, two.
And you're, you're going to take.
So if Don, you just picked the two you want to ask?
Okay, I'll take the first and the last.
Okay. And Lucy, second?
Yep.
And Eric, third, okay.
And these are on the second set of questions?
Yep. Okay.
Do we need to ascertain whether he holds a hoisting license?
It's all, I think.
Was that in there? I saw it in this one. I didn't see it in the other.
It lists some licenses on his.
Yes.
Hoisting license on his, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that that one got passed.
And I just do want to inform the board that the second candidate, which is Brian, he is here. He's a little early.
Okay. I went down to Rinse Sess and then they're like trying to get me to eat. I'm like, I don't need to eat. I'm fine.
Did you bring anything to share?
Listen, I offered to share with refreshments.
Oh, I'm glad you got that. And he knows that I'm just teasing him. I did want to ask while we're doing this, and it's probably something we shouldn't make any candidate aware of with summer policy. For our highway department, are they only work four day week? Because they use extended hours on Mondays through Thursdays with the Fridays off. Do we want to reiterate that policy?
Do we know that that policy is still the best thing to do?
I wouldn't change any policy until we appointed the director.
And let them kind of decide.
With them, what they feel.
Okay.
The town needs.
Because I don't know that this is a regular policy. I know when it was instituted that they started allowing.
Yeah.
The highway people to work the four day week extended hours so that they would have a three day weekend. It's just that I've also noticed over the years, the time has been expanding and expanding. Into spring and late fall. And I, I just. We might want to curb the expansion of that time.
This person would say this is what we need. Maybe they think they, we would need five days.
Or at least one person alternate.
Right.
You know, but I would certainly wanted the new superintendent to say that.
Yeah.
Yep.
But he is superintendent, even if they do continue in what they do. He's on all, he's just on call all the time.
Right.
He would have to handle any of the emergencies, anything else that would come up, even if he's on vacation, he would have to hopefully come back.
Or delegate.
Or delegate, definitely.
Yeah.
And that's when we could.
Mm hmm.
You know.
Do I have time to run downstairs to go to the bathroom?
Are you going to shut this off?
Why don't we take a five minute break for candidates?
I'm just gonna turn off mute.
Okay. Brian, this is going to be recorded. It's on YouTube and live.
I've sat where you've sat many times, so I know what you're, what you're expecting.
Qualifications?
Oh.
I got my OSHA 30, first responder and yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, it's 1:20 and we're back in session. Okay, first up is Brian Fillion. Brian, why don't you just give us an overview of your background? What you're all about.
Okay, so I started, I actually started my own business back in 99 or 2000. And my qualifications, I was, I started as a landscaper. I went into excavation. Then I expanded to tree work and, and construction. And so I did that for 15 years full time and five years part time running my own business. I purchased my own equipment, did my own reviews on what else purchasing. And I, for five years part time, I started teaching. I wanted to be a teacher. So I actually started my teaching career in 97 at Western West Precision Institute. One of the courses I, I taught was safety. So it was all about safety. So I would have to go to companies and teach a safety course. And I continued that when I started teaching again, it was all about safety. So that's one of our courses. I, I am Massachusetts licensed. For engineering for advanced manufacturing. So that's, that was my, my teaching. So I'm used to being in front of people, talking, giving lectures. And I did, I did get back into, as I was teaching, I started part time in a DPW over near me. I just winter, winter, so no underground. I've always plowed with my business. I've been plowing since 99 for towns. And so then I, I got out of teaching a year and a half ago and I work for DPW now.
Okay, we've got a set of questions we're going to run through. Describe some experience that you've had managing highway department, highway department maintenance.
Okay, and highway department maintenance, meaning what kind of?
Projects, any project you've been involved in with that agency.
Where I am now? Oh, whatever we need to do. I built many basins, catch basins. Plowing, obviously, I just did a long hours this past week.
True.
I've done a lot of street signs. Streets, we, we do all the potholes and we cement, done a lot of cement work. We do a lot of sidewalks. We'll be starting that again too, in the spring as soon as weather allows us to. So I've done a lot of cement work. I've worked on the, I've got to, I've worked on loaders, backhoes, heavy trucks.
Mechanical repair?
Mechanical repair. Okay, that's a good question. Now, when you're in, in an interview, it's not polite to take out a phone, a cell phone. To answer that question, I am going to use my cell phone because I'm glad you asked that. So, as you know, I'm a teacher, I was a teacher. I had permission from the superintendent, when you work in vocational high school, senior year, every senior has to. Have a senior project to show that they've learned something throughout their, their time there. Okay, so. My superintendent, or I was, gave me permission to do a group senior project. If you ever watched American Pickers, I like to, I like old stuff. So I picked a 1929 Ford Model A engine that was underneath the barn for 60 years. It was rusted as can be. So I, I brought it to the, my school, I got permission. And I'm, I'm having my students help me take it out of the truck and my students are like, Mr. Philly, and this is a hunk of junk. I says, don't worry about it. I'm going to show you how to rebuild this. I, I like to rebuild stuff, take things apart. I was on Governor Baker's Committee for, for advanced manufacturing from machine tool technology. So. My school, it's one of the schools that got a $500,000 grant to upgrade all our equipment. I got to refurbish the whole, my whole class. So to make a long story short, we broke every nut and bolt in the thing. It was all rusted. I showed my students how to take the bolts out. We did not buy anything. Did not go to Rocky's Ace Hardware, Home Depot, Lowe's or anything. We made everything. That's what we do as machinists. We make everything. So to make a long story short, I ended up with a brand spanking new 1929 Ford Model A engine, completely built in my class.
Lovely.
So when you say in my mechanical.
Kind.
Yeah, and so when you, when you're in a vocational school, if you go to automotive, you learn how to change brakes, change oil. Me, we completely take things apart. I had the engine block completely unassembled or completely unassembled. Put it in my CNC machine. We completely milled it and everything. And we put all the stuff back together. I had all the valves done, everything done in my shop. So. Yes, I am mechanically inclined.
Thank you.
Good answer?
Very good. Thank you.
Do you have any experience with the chapter 90 stuff with the state?
When it comes to chapter 90, I've never had to deal with that because I'm just starting my, you know, my DPW experience. But in my own experience, I have, have had to work on my own, buy my own equipment. So I know that's about purchasing equipment and stuff. So I know that's what that is. But I, like I said, I've had to do my own research and purchase my own stuff. So I am used to purchasing equipment. Chapter 90, I have not done with that.
Would be cost at all projects?
Oh, yeah, for all my business, I have.
For the business.
That's something I have to do, yes.
Okay, all right.
How do you prioritize tasks and allocate resources to ensure efficient maintenance? Are you, you're probably not deciding on projects now at, at the DPW prioritizing projects, but. Have you had to do that either in the highway or in your business?
No, that's, that's, that's a good answer. Probably good answer, good question. It all depends on safety. We are, DPW is Department of Public Works. We, we are there for the public. That is our job. So we're, we're there to make the conditions safer, the, the public to go through. So safety is number one. So we have to prioritize by safety. What is, if something's unsafe to do, that's obviously is going to be a high priority versus something that's, we can hold off a little bit. It's all about safety.
Okay.
How are you going to ensure compliance with safety regulations and standards in a highway maintenance program?
A lot of safety stuff, huh? I know it's my number one priority. Like I said, I, I used to teach a safety course. That was part of my. And I'm going to share one of the experiences that I, that I've shared, shared with all my students because it's about respect of your equipment. You want your students or those that are involved with running the equipment to have respect for what you are operating. On this safety video, it's, everything's on YouTube. That's what's nice about technology now. And I show this right, right to my students. There's a big loader, big bucket, like a 10 yard bucket, big pile of sand. There's one guy right in front of the loader bucket. Another guy over here, the guy over here is not watching the guy in front of the loader bucket. The loader bucket, the operator cannot see the person because the bucket's so high. He goes in and scoops the person up, goes right to the sand, scoops the sand up. This now goes, gets dumped into a sifter, takes all the big stuff, makes it small, pumps, pumps out, okay? It shows the bucket coming up, dumping the sand with the person in it, into the sifter. It's all on YouTube. You can look it up. And the last time you see this guy is he's trying to crawl out and then all of a sudden takes him in. That's respect. You gotta have, you gotta show what were your surroundings. So when there's a piece of equipment like that where you can't see, you need somebody on the side. That can see everything that's happening. So when it comes to safety, I've been teaching safety for 10 years. And started in 98, so I'm very safety conscious.
True. Excuse me. That's it?
Yes, sorry, excuse me.
Could you give us an example when you've had to diffuse a negative situation with your employees or anyone else?
Negative situation? Negative, negative.
Or disagreement with anybody that works for you? Or with you?
Conflict? How about a conflict?
Conflict would be fine.
No.
No, not even with your teaching, there has.
Oh, oh, teenagers, okay, teenagers. Yes, there's a good one. One of the things as a teacher, what you learn to do is you want to have a report with the individuals, even in the workplace, I can say that too. You have to.
Absolutely.
You gotta be able to get along with everybody. And. What you learn is you do not, if you have an issue with someone, you do not do it in front of everybody else. You want to take that individual side and you want to have a professional talk with them. You, you're in a position of being a professional. As a teacher or as a business owner or as a manager of a company or as a supervisor, superintendent. So you have to maintain that professional attitude. So that was a situation where I did have with a student. And after class, well, last minute of class, because of course they want to leave when the bell rings. So I, I did, you know, let the class sit for a little while. I took the student into my office and just had a nice professional conversation with them. And you'd be surprised, you know, they, a student will have respect for you as long as you also have respect for them. So it's, it's a two way street. So you have to, you have to have respect for each other.
I agree with that wholeheartedly. I taught for 34 years.
Oh, did you really?
Yes, I did. That is absolutely correct with everybody that you've worked with.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was a good question, good answer.
All right, what strategies would you employ to stay updated on emerging technologies and best practices in highway maintenance?
I always Google everything now. I mean, there's up to date equipment. There's technologies always changing. Like I said, even in the school system, I just, we just updated all our equipment a few years ago. When I reach search stuff, I will, there's a reason why things are cheaper than others. As an example. I don't, I'm not, I won't mention brands, but a loader, a backhoe, there's certain brands out there. There is a reason why one is cheaper. Now, I'm, have a college education. I, one of my classes, I take metallurgy. So you learn a different, differences between metal and metals, the different percentage of iron, it's in each metal sort of strength of materials. And some, some equipment is cheaper because they do not have that iron content, that percentage that they need in order to be strengthened. And so I've researched all that. And there are particular brands that I like over others. I know there's a, a budget. And we have to go by the budget. And, but I do, I will always put my, I'll show my research. To whoever I have to show it to and as to why this would be my decision. Not that is, that's what we would ever get. But as long as my decision is there and then we can discuss this, you know, what affordability is.
Okay, like your follow up Ford or Chevy?
Okay, I'm gonna, no, no, I'm gonna answer that. I'm gonna tell you, okay, I'm gonna answer that question. And this is how I look at it. A Dodge, a Ford, a Chevy, if one of them was better than the other, then the other two would be out of business. How's that? That a good, a good answer?
Safe answer.
Very good.
Hey, I've been around a few years.
How would you approach long-term planning and development of highway infrastructure, such as the roads, the sidewalks, bridges, et cetera?
I, I know part of the job is what we do now is we, we drive around and we look for like, I'll, I'll say basin work because those are in the, in the roads. And we'll drive around, see which basins need to be, which are really falling apart, which are dangerous. And then we'll put those on a priority list versus roads that are, if roads caving in, that'll be on priority, priority list. Washouts, we have a lot of washouts. We have, we've had a lot of rain lately. And. So if it's a trip hazard, it's about public safety. That'll be on a priority list. That's, that's how I'd decide for that.
And something like that, then would you, this is just my question, it's not on the paper, consider like taking a ride through out the town. Every day, like early morning, just to check out. All the surrounding areas and see what it may need. To take.
As an in town or out of town?
In town.
In town, that's, that's part of the job. So part of the job is to drive throughout their whole streets and, and, and check everything out. Oh, yeah, that's.
Every day?
You know what?
It's, I know it's 45 miles of road. In this town.
Yeah, where I'm from, there's a lot more than that.
I'm sure.
You know what? That's fine. You know what? That's fine.
But it's just something that, you know, I, I'm curious about is how often you would go out to take a look at the roads.
You know, it, it's, once again, it's all about safety. Um, if, if you have a new road, then yeah, you don't have to do it every day. Um, if a road that you, that you can see that is uh needs some maintenance on it, then you wanna pay closer attention to a road like that. Uh, I know that part of the job uh is, is, is making sure that it's safe for the public. So yeah, you, you have to, um. Maybe depending on what the road is, maybe once a week, there are, there are some roads that you maybe wanna check um quicker, like bridges. I don't, I don't know if you have, what you have for bridges in this town?
I don't.
Are you have any bridges?
Yeah.
Wasn't the question about bridges too? Didn't you say bridges? Ah, okay, that's a trick question. So no bridges, so no bridges, okay.
Lots of culvert stuff.
But you know, I, I like when you say this is, this is your question because I remember, because I've interviewed many people. And I'll look at that sheet and the, the generic questions. And uh so I'll look at my supervisor and say, listen, I gotta ask a question that's going to pertain to the job.
We have those.
Oh, do you? Okay, alright. That's why I threw these out right away. So I know you got, you gotta have a Class B. I got my air brake with a tanker endorsement. I got my two A, one C, four E, four G for hoisting. I'm OSHA thirty certified. I got my uh basic life support first responder card out here, my uh DOT card up to date. So, gee, those are questions that, you know.
One that we're concerned with too in town is um successful cost saving. Have you had some experience where you have actually saved money on some of your projects? And how did you do it?
All about budgeting. Yeah, when you're running a business, you, I myself too was on a budget. You only make so much money, you only have so much money to spend. And uh so yeah, you gotta be, you gotta budget what you're doing uh in a timeline that you're allowed. Um, when I came up, when I have, came up with a project, I had to make sure that I was gonna be able to finish the project.
Uh, communication. Um, how do you communicate with the elected leaders, uh, community members regarding what's going on um with the highway department?
Okay, this is a trick question. If I say telephone, you can communicate, but that's it. Um. Is the highway department close to like the town hall where people work, where you could be face-to-face? I'm a face-to-face person. So it, it is close to, so you know, you get a handshake, a face-to-face, you, you know the person that you're talking to. You know, when we just had a Zoom with this, with this COVID, uh, it, it's pretty tough being, being on Zoom. Because you really, you, you don't interact with the person. You wanna, like me, you can't see me doing this on Zoom. Well, maybe you can if I'm like, you know. But uh, I'm an interactor. I like to interact with people. So.
How about the, the public? Can you think of how you would try to engage with the public?
I have no problem knocking on a door. We have like in our water department, they have to go and knock on people's doors to go inside and inject the water meters and stuff. I have no problem knocking on, on somebody's door.
Um, can you share an approach to managing and mentoring staff that you've had?
Uh, when somebody has a question, I'm, I'm thinking this is where you're going with this. Uh, you have to be able to uh decipher what the question is, what it means, and what the individual is actually asking. And what'll, what'll be a benefit that that individual, um. I, I, I can just say, just from interacting with, with students, I've, I've dealt with thousands of students, talking to them throughout the years. I got nine years' teaching experience. So I've always interacted with, with, with students that they have a problem. Uh, you have to understand, like, uh, many people I've dealt with, they got family issues. They're, they come from one home families. And uh you have to be that person that's a, gonna have a, a engineer. You're gonna be able to listen to somebody. It's uh, I've always been brought up there to, you can't talk too much. You have to ask, so listen to the person.
Okay. These next few questions are gonna be a little more detailed. Why is it important to pre-treat a road surface prior to a winter storm?
Why is it?
Why is it important to pre-treat?
Okay, so I've done a lot of pre-treating. Uh, do you have salt here? Do you have sand? Or do you have a salt-sand mixture? Because it's three different.
I think we have both.
So you got, you got dirt roads and asphalt roads. Okay, because you can't put salt on a, on a dirt road. Uh, why is it important? Because when it starts snowing out, the salt is there to dissipate the snow as soon as it starts and it won't, um, it won't freeze as quick. This, this past, this past storm, we've, we were out, we were, we salted all our roads and uh, you know, do it just before the storm. That's one thing I know because as it's, if it's freezing already, then we're driving on freezing, frozen roads. So we wanna make sure that the roads are, are safe and they're not frozen. That's, we preach, we preach, treat the roads to keep it safe and unfrozen for the public.
Thank you.
What type of precipitation is most difficult to work with and how would you treat it?
I know this is New England. We don't get the snowstorms like we used to, so I'm not gonna put snow in there right now. We're getting mostly freezing rain. Right, it's mostly freezing rain. And uh is it difficult? You, you better believe it's difficult. Um, we're constantly, like I said, we pre-treat them. We also post-treat our storms too. So we, we post-treat the, the storms. Um, and we're constantly out throughout the night or what, what you use mostly nighttime. And, and we're constantly over, over and over again, going over our roads. And there are times that if we feel that the roads are, are okay, that we still have, we drive our roads just to make sure. We have different elevations in our town. And uh for instance, downtown, we might get a, for, for snow purposes, we might get half inches of snow. But then we go to our hills, we might have four inches. So the, the individual that has that, the, that area that he has to um plow, he'll be out plowing, well, we pre-treating with salt downtown.
I was just gonna ask you, what do you pre-treat with?
We have, we just have salt. And then for our dirt roads, we have uh, uh dirt.
Just plain salt?
We do it with plain salt. Now, I, I've worked with another town that they actually mix their salt and sand.
Mm-hmm.
So, but when you mix your salt and sand, what I noticed, now this is coming from experience on, on different towns, because when I was in a different town when I was um teaching for, doing it part-time. Um, they let the snow build up, about two inches, and then they put salt and sand on. So the sand actually gives attraction.
Right.
Where we are, we actually in town now is we salt before, so it actually melts any snow that's, that's coming down.
Okay, so you don't use salt and sand mixed together at all where?
My town, it's not salt and sand. It's uh sand for the dirt roads, salt for the asphalt roads.
Okay.
In my other town that when I was part-time there, we actually used, it was all strictly salt and sand, but they let the snow get a little, little higher.
A little higher.
Yeah, my town, we don't.
Right. Okay, I was just, because that was one of the questions I was going to ask you, what you consider a good ratio is between salt and sand when you're mixing it together?
Oh, and the other town, they did a thirty, uh, thirty, thirty seventy mixture.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, what is the practical working temperature of rock salt?
Oh, man, really?
On a full moon.
Okay, first on a full moon, it's not gonna, we're not gonna have any frozen precipitation. Um, all I can say to that question. Oh, that's a phone ring. Am I supposed to answer the question now? I, I know that anything under thirty-two degrees is frozen. We have on our trucks, we have an indicator on our trucks that gives us the air temperature and the ground temperature. And uh, so, but we, we really look at that. And that's one of the questions that the supervisor will, will ask us as we're driving around, what's your road temperature? We don't care about the, the, the air temperature. We care about the road temperature because that's what's gonna freeze. So I, I'm thirty-two degrees, that's, because we're, we're, and where I, I am right now, it's, if it's thirty-two degrees, we're all pre-treating on the road. The air temperature can be thirty-five, but the road temperature's thirty-two, we're pre-treating.
Yeah.
Yep. According to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, what is the standard measure of rock salt used per lane mile per pound?
Oh, man, you know. Okay, you gotta go to the class for that one. Okay, because our um assistant superintendent has that information. And uh he has told us and he has set our trucks up to that. Okay? So what I'm gonna tell you for that answer is I don't know, but I do know this, it doesn't work. Okay, so that's my answer because we, we gotta set up where you gotta, you gotta set up at like two inches or one and a half inches above and it comes out at a certain point. And uh, so as a, as a Department of Public Works, our thing is about, we need the road safe to drive on. If they're not safe to drive on and if that percentage rate, if that's what it is, um, and it's not safe, then we have to bend the rules a little bit. And that's, that might be the wrong answer to that question, but it's about safety. And uh, like I said, he has those figures. And he told us to use them and it doesn't work, my experience with that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
And I, I will give you an example. So last year, we did have a school bus stuck on ice on a road like this in a very unsafe situation. There was a little ones, many buses, maybe ten to fifteen, nine and ten-year-olds. Okay? And uh that was an unsafe situation and that's why I answer how I answer. So because those kids are now in a dangerous position. If it, the, the school was, I was right there. I saw it, I saw it. I, I went, ran right over there. And I was talking to the school driver, I was trying to, I'm right here, I'll put my truck in back of your truck, or back of your bus, make sure you don't slide down the hill. Because it was a hill and it was an intersection right there and it could have been a disaster. So what we had, I called another truck up, we came up, we sanded everything, it's, it's, we, and we spread it. So we did not go by the percentage.
Right.
Just because of that, that instance.
Great. Anybody have any follow-up?
Just one more question. Have you had experience getting grants?
Oh, yeah, yeah, in, in the teacher. So like I said, we, um, I was on Governor Baker's committee back in two thousand eighteen. And uh so as, as we had to, uh, we had a grants, Governor Baker was giving out five hundred thousand dollar grants to uh, to schools. And uh we have to write a letter. And what I noticed is in these letters, you have to say, you have to have the correct wording, the correct words.
Yes, you do.
To grant. If you do not have those correct words, you will not get your grant. So uh that's one thing that we, we, we learn really quick a, as teachers. You, you gotta, we, we got, I believe now we have courses that we take for this. And uh so, but if you have all the correct word, it doesn't matter where they are. They actually look for, for those words. As long as you have those words in, that's how you get your grant. That's my experience as a teacher.
I do have an, another follow-up. Um, uh, how would you rate your comfort level with technology, uh, computer technology? Mild, moderate, superb? How would you describe it?
What if I give you experience? So I'm not gonna answer it that way. Massachusetts licensed certified to teach. One of my courses is I teach, I have to teach um CAD CAM. I teach um Mastercam. I teach SolidWorks. So that's all for the engineering. So my students, that's, so when you come up with computers, so I'm actually teaching that. So I also teach Algebra one, Algebra two geometry trig. So.
You can do Outlook and Excel.
You know, when.
Use the World Wide Web.
Oh, let me tell you something. Uh, uh, during, during COVID, that's all we use was, was, we're, we're using computers. So uh, I, I'm okay with computers, how's that?
We just found out this morning, launching soon Mass DOT Grant Central for all grant programs. So it is now has to be all done on computer online beginning May second.
So let's, everything's on.
People just need to be aware of that if they're looking at a program such as Highway Superintendent.
Everything's on computers now.
Yeah.
What, what, let me just ask this, what would we do without computers?
Oh, I can think of a lot of.
Don't ask.
Sorry.
That's a good one, because when we're at the break room, I, I'm looking at everybody, everybody's on the phone.
Yeah.
So I say, what would you guys be doing thirty years ago?
Yeah, exactly.
You know, so yeah.
A bubble thing called talking.
Exactly. You know, when you communicate and then get to know your, your, you know, your individuals, your, your people, you know, so yeah, that's a good one. I like that. I'm there with you, so.
Alright, do you have any questions for the board?
You know what? Yeah, I have one question. Okay? So when um, when an individual comes in and they're coming to a job. They always look towards the future. I'm a guy, maybe, maybe a twenty-year-old doesn't have the same question that I would. When I come in, I'm like, okay, I, what is the future for, for, for this job? Uh, uh, meaning, um. There's a time in, in one's life where you, for some reason, I don't know why, but every day you get older. And uh there's a time where you, you don't work anymore. You, you pass that stage. So what does this town have to offer somebody that is here for an extended period of time? That they can actually have a life after work? How's that? I'm gonna question it that way.
You've been teaching for nine years, so you're in the county retirement.
Shh, that doesn't count.
So we have the same thing.
Okay.
So you'd be transferring over into the county retirement.
Yeah, okay.
You have anything?
I thought you were talking about nightlife. You can go chasing cows or.
Horses.
Yeah, horses, pigs, uh, dogs.
Dogs, yes.
Cow tipping.
I was just gonna say cow tipping. I was just, yeah, yeah.
I don't know that we have any cows. We don't have many cows left.
No farms around this time, really?
There are some, there are some. I have one store to me.
Not as many.
Actually, I have two next door to me.
But I'm, excuse me, but I go to bed early because I get a throw to go to work, just so you know, no light, light, I fear.
We do have a, a liquor store.
And a winery.
I know.
Winery.
And a winery.
I know there's a winery. I think it was in Hardwood.
Yeah, we have one here.
It's better, huh? Although, you know, a good glass of homemade wine does settle the stomach, so there's nothing wrong with that. So yes. It's not too much.
It's okay.
I'm all set, I'm all set, yeah.
Very good.
That's it.
Appreciate you coming in. Thank you for showing.
You. Hey, thank you very much.
Okay, that's. Sir? Took notes too?
Yep.
You didn't take any notes?
I watched the YouTube.
Yes, sorry, I do. It's so much easier for me because I can't read when I wrote anything.
I'll wait to post it. Because apparently I posted too quick.
Yes, we absolutely.
That helps me when you do that. So we have another candidate at no, eight minutes.
At two thirty. Actually, I think it's at two thirty.
Was it two thirty?
Yep, I thought, yeah, the um, two o'clock um withdrew. So do we want a recess?
Yes.
I think so.
Alright, we're gonna take a half hour recess now.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, we're back in session two twenty four P M. And our next candidate, John Stanton. John, just give us all the history on your background.
Um, most recent, almost two decades, decades of municipality work in water and highway. Um, started, been born, raised in Brookfield, never left. Went to Tintas High School, did carpentry class, worked for Mark Ladue and the Braintree for a while, then went on my own. And uh, fell into municipality when times got tough, when I was self-employed and never looked back.
To uh, describe your experience managing highway department maintenance projects, budgets, bids, that type of stuff.
Um, right now, uh, we're, it depends on the town. So it depends on the town. So Spencer works where, sometimes I don't agree on how it works, but being a secondary there, they go by grants and how much money the town has and what roads are going to be redone. So we could have water mains blowing up down the street, but they have a grant for the street. So that's what we're doing. Um, so experience wise, um, I was always been a secondary in Spencer. I'm primary now in Whitemanville. Um, Whitemanville Water, don't be deceived there. They're more of a construction company owned by RH Way Construction.
Oh.
Um, they only sell water and after that we do subcontract everything.
Oh.
So uh, we sell everything. It's a half a penny a gallon to Exbridge, Northbridge, all the surrounding towns. And anything that happens, we subcontract. We do it. So if there's a water main break, we shut the water off. We let Northridge know and we charge them accordingly. So we're a construction company. There's seven reservoirs. We maintain seven reservoirs. We, we do everything. So there's uh, small towns in Rhode Island. We maintain. Uh, yes, it does involve water, but probably a good sixty percent of it is construction related. Um, we plow their roads. Um, a lot of these pump station have sometimes two miles of road to get in there.
Yes.
Um, some of them have reservoirs. We maintain the reservoirs, roadside mowers. Um, so it's, we've done everything. Uh, we just did eighteen hundred feet of drainage for Exbridge. So, so it's, don't be deceived. One of the reasons why I'm trying to leave Whitemanville. Cause one of the biggest mistakes in my life is uh, I was at a water works meeting and we all have to, we all hobnob. We all try to stay in touch with everybody and I was offered a job there because I know my experience in construction, water and highway. So they offered me a price tag that I couldn't refuse with a company vehicle and I was in charge over there at twelve employees, blah, blah, blah. I was only two weeks in and I got my first paycheck and realized they're not municipality. They're a private contractor owned by RH Way Construction. And after twenty years of invested already in Worcester County Retirement, I immediately started looking for a job. So that's why I'm here. So we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
So I did one of the biggest mistakes of my life at fifty years old. So you think you get smarter as you get older, but sometimes not.
It happens.
Does.
Have you had any experience with chapter ninety, state chapter ninety grants or anything like that?
A little bit, a little bit being uh, secondary. Um, sometimes when I go in Spencer, when my boss was on vacation, I would step in with there. Um, I do know how the chapter ninety money works, but I've never officially been in charge of a highway. So
Okay.
Definitely know how it works though.
So you know the annual budget, how that
Yep.
process works.
Yeah.
Okay.
Annual budget for Whiteman Water is three point five million.
Okay.
So I'm fairly familiar with budgets, even though I do have a G M and we work together, it is still with a three point five million dollar budget. It's a two man job.
Yeah. Yeah.
So very familiar with that.
Okay. Very good.
How do you prioritize tasks and allocate resources to ensure efficient operations?
Uh, depends on the task. Sometimes it's first come, first served. Uh, sometimes it depends on the emergency. Sometimes it depends on the importance. So depends on what we're talking about. That's kind of a loaded question. Um, ice going across the road. Do we get that first? Of course. Um, you know, drainage not working properly, that might be second. So depends on.
Hierarchy of needs.
Yes.
Yep.
How would you ensure compliance with safety regulations and standards with highway maintenance operations?
You say that again?
True. How would you ensure compliance with safety regulations in highway maintenance operations?
I mean, if there was something I needed to know, I mean, safety wise, a lot of it's common sense. Um, I mean, I certainly would watch what the guys are doing. Uh, safety equipment at all times, safety glasses, gloves, some vests on the road. Um, you know, for us in the water business, P P E is huge. We put chemical in the water that raw form can take your skin off the second you touch it. So um, I'm very aware of safety precautions in P P E. So it depends on what the guys are doing, depends on what we're doing. They're jacking up a truck. We should have the right jacks. Um, they're in the road. They should be wearing their equipment. Lights should be on. Trucks should be facing towards traffic. There's a lot to it.
Hmm.
So.
Okay.
Can you give me an example of a time when you've had to resolve a conflict or a disagreement with a member of your team?
So my fourth week at Whiteman Water, I dispatched a guy out uh, at four A M. In the morning. We had a low chlorine alarm in another town that we maintain. Um, I suppose it doesn't really matter now because he's gone, so I can probably give details. He came in drunk. Um, checked the alarm, uh, drove out and we have those gates to keep the honest, honest. It's not really a fence. It's just a gate. It has two points at the bottom and it actually goes through a point, four foot point and then locks, basically to keep traffic out really. Um, the wind blew it and blew out into the line of sight and the line of sight of traffic as he was coming out. Now this is in the middle of woods. It's a pump station. Uh, he ran into him. Um, he had twelve ribs broken, tore the whole top half of his motor off. It penetrated all the bags went off. Um, then he continued to pull himself off, pull the truck over till it's car over. It says it was own vehicle. Called his wife. She brought him to the emergency room. So we had to do our own investigation. Um, I did my best to do what I possibly could do. Um, talking to the guys, we found out he went to a rock concert the night before. Um, we were lucky enough. My G M knows a guy that knows a guy. We were able to get his blood alcohol content and it was twice the amount and we fired him. So I'm very familiar with discipline.
I would say.
Yep. And the sad part is he's a C D L driver. So he'll never drive again.
No.
Oh, no.
No.
Yep. And he's got a wife and kids.
Oh.
Yep.
What strategies would you employ to stay updated on new technology and best practices and highway maintenance?
The best is what we just talked about. I just talked about how you got to hobnob. You go to all these vendors when you can. Um, in the water business, it's what usually what you sit. We go every year. I know highway has the same thing. Um, I did it for quite a few years till I got out of that, but yeah, the best thing is to talk to salesmen. Uh, I have good friends in the highway business. One of my references is Nick Repack. I've known him for years and years and years. We used to chum together and we've always done highway related stuff together. So um, Nick works for the town. She's ran just constant stuff. They're much better.
Yeah.
They actually monitor the flow and how much salt they actually put out. So they don't, they don't do too much. It's actually every truck has a computerized system that tells them how much tonnage they're putting out per road.
Yeah.
So they have belly scrapers only on their ninety roads um, that constantly run full time salt. So it's, it's totally different, but vendoring is talking to salesmen is the best way. Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah. Good.
How do you approach long-term planning and development of highway infrastructure?
Uh, well, I can tell you the first thing I'm gonna do if you guys do like me as a candidate is to drive these roads and see what needs to be fixed and what needs to be done. Um, there's a lot of stuff that can be done. Highway maintenance that involves roads that people just don't do anymore sadly. But um, I do notice that I'm shocked that you guys still use sand, which I'm impressed because I grew up in the era where it was fifty fifty mix always, regardless of whether it was ice or not. And most towns are changing to salt, strictly salt, and there's accidents everywhere. Um, but yeah, there's a, I would definitely drive around town to see what needs to be done, what needs to be fixed, what sumps need to be cleaned. I need to figure out a lot here. See how you guys do things. So I need to see what kind of equipment you guys have. Small towns sometimes don't have the equipment. When I was in East Brookfield, show When I was in East Brookfield, show a story, uh, we used to have a mutual agreement with Brookfield. Um, they had a roadside mower. We had a catch basin truck. So we used to swap, swap equipment and swap users. So, um, at the time I was kind of being used and abused. So I was the only one with a roadside mower in East Brookfield and a catch basin unit. And so I used to clean all the catch basins between East Brookfield and Brookfield and rode most sites. It's three guys, three guys. So it's twenty miles of road over there, seven miles of dirt road. Three guys plus the water department, but thankfully the water department was no treatment, no nothing. It was just six hundred twelve services and it was ninety five percent highway, but.
Yeah.
So it wasn't too bad.
Good.
Yeah.
Can you provide an example for us of a successful cost-saving initiative that you implemented in your job?
Yeah, we just did in, uh, for the town of Northbridge, um, they were going out to bid. Uh, replacing five streets of water main. It was almost five thousand feet. Um, Jerry and I, it's kind of a team effort. Jerry and I talked about it. Northbridge came to us about potentially doing it, me having only six guys. Um, we talked to the town of Northbridge and we actually teamed up with RH Way Construction to save Northbridge thousands and thousands of dollars to put that water main in. Because a lot of these subcontractors come in, they, they go by prevailing wage, they go by all kinds of stuff. So when we're already working in the town and Whiteinfield already has a contract with Uxbridge and Northbridge, there's an easier way to do loophole.
Yeah.
Avoid stuff like that. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just did it on fifty, two hundred feet of water main. And we had to move seven catch basins at about fifteen hundred feet of, uh, drainage. So quit the project.
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, how do you successfully communicate with stakeholders such as elected officials, community members regarding, um, projects, needs?
Uh, communication, number one. Um, depends on what kind of money's in the budget. Communication is absolutely key. Can't just go spend the money just because you feel like it.
How do you communicate it?
Um.
Are there different methods of communication that you would find more effective with maybe elected officials, with community members?
I would think the first thing to do is contact, I mean, the selectman, truly they're the boss. Um, depending on the project, depending on the size of the things that need to be done. I mean, if it's just maintenance of a truck, I don't think it'd be a big deal, but if it's something that's going to be something major, something needs to be discussed, it needs to be brought up. Estimates need to be done, it needs to be discussed either at a town meeting. Um, or just on the QT to see where we need to go and what direction.
Um, can you share your approach to managing and mentoring staff?
Um, I mean, my management skills right now, it's supposed to be according to my boss, my GM is very good. Um, I've never been, I've, I've wasn't a manager my whole life, so a lot of guys appreciate that. I've been blue collar ninety percent of my life. So I appreciate what the guys are doing and I know what they're going through. Um, even though I was white collared there, a lot of the times I would still put the blue collar on and help them. So a lot of the guys appreciate that. You, um, I was brought up to treat people the way I want to be treated. And you're surprised how far that goes in life, especially with your workers.
These next set of questions are a little more technical. Why is it important to pre-treat a road service prior to a winter storm?
One hundred percent public safety. A hundred percent. Uh, for instance, Brookfield right now is very lack. Um, they have a couple of guys that quit their highway. We have three trailer parks in Brookfield. Um, ambulance constantly going by my house. I live on Town Farm Road. We have Brookfield Meadows, which is basically a glorified trailer park. Um, it's a little step up because they brought modulars in that are, it's basically a trailer park. It's crucial. Fire, ambulance, public safety, health. People like myself still have to go to work in the morning. Uh, yesterday morning was a nightmare.
Yeah.
Because they have one and a half guys over there. So, yeah, yeah, they're starving for a superintendent. They're, um, there's a lot of things going on over there in my hometown. It's depressing because I've lived all that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What type of precipitation is most difficult to work with and how would you treat it?
Ice, hundred percent. It's diff, it's very difficult. Um, it's sometimes it is constant. Sometimes it is actually a waste of material because ice can actually, so salt doesn't work after eighteen degrees unless traffic moves it. So if it's in the middle of the night, you're laying layer on top of layer on top of layer. That's why I was very impressed that you guys still use sand. A lot of people don't agree with that anymore. It gives traction. Fifty fifty mix goes a long ways. Ice is the most difficult. Because ice will actually build right over it and keep on going. If traffic's not there, that salt, it'll just keep building up until traffic's there or the sun comes out or something changes. But at twelve o'clock at night, when everybody's sleeping, you will constantly run the same road time after time after time until the truck starts to help break it up. So ice is hundred percent. Never mind the fact that trees have fallen down and roads can be unpassable. So, yeah.
Uh, what's the lowest practical working temperature of rock salt?
The lowest? It's eighteen degrees. After eighteen degrees, it does not work. At least in my opinion.
It, it falls within the range in my cheat sheet here.
Yeah. But I've been doing this too long. Even though my resume says Spencer Water Department for twelve years, they have their union over there, so they, they are more than willing to pay waters. Water does make a little more money than highway. They're more than willing to pay water rate for overtime. So all us water guys help out. I've been plowing snow for decades and decades and decades and, and when COVID hit, one guy gets it, half the highway department gets it, the seven guys over there. So we worked out a deal with the selectmen that once our water stuff was done, we helped Evan as much as we could.
Nice.
Yeah, even though it wasn't in the contract, we all agreed because they were willing to pay us, you know? Um, we did our best because the DP has a lot of rules too. We can't, we have to work four hours a day. There's a lot of restrictions.
Yeah.
So. Um, but yeah, we helped Evan for a long time during COVID. I was in a wing truck one day, loaded the next, one ton the next. All I got is a one ton job. I'm like, yeah, whatever. So, yeah.
What is the state standard of measure for rock salt per lane mile? Pound by pounds?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I've worked for a little town in East Brookfield and Spencer. We, we put down what we need to put down without trying to waste as much as we can.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a, thank you. Yeah. Nick and I, the same guy I was just talking about, every once in a while I see him at, at a meet or something. Because he, he hobnobs with his higher ups, so he'll come to one of these water events and we talk about that. And he told me about the computerized system they put in, measuring exact tonnage. I said, really, Nick? He's like, I'm telling him, we gotta do it. We're wasting millions and millions of dollars. Like, oh my word. So it's different. And Shrewsbury, Shrewsbury is a city. It really is.
Yeah.
And then ninety roads, you've got to be on it. They actually have belly scrapers over there. Which, yeah, I don't see many towns using that.
No.
Yep.
Wow.
Nonstop, the belly scrapers are pushing it and laying salt at the same time. Uh, the whole storm. Keep it black.
That's what your taxes are paying for.
Yeah, he tells me how much they waste over there. It's, it's just, it blows my mind. They'll, they got guys that actually live in Brookfield that work for there because they're, they're so lack in help. So they'll call them in. They have a, a specific weather channel for themselves that they pay for that only targets Shrewsbury. So Nick calls everybody in an hour before the storm starts. He knows when the flake is going to happen. He calls everybody in an hour beforehand. No joke. And so the town has to, I, I don't know where Shrewsbury gets their money, but they're paying all these guys to come in an hour.
Even starts.
Yes. Blows my mind. Working for these little towns my whole life, the money that just, he's got three sweepers over there. Three. East Brookfield is lucky to have one. Yeah.
Shrewsbury.
Forty miles of sidewalk over there.
Talking to a former Shrewsbury school teacher.
But you know.
What have any follow-ups?
Yes.
Uh, uh, what is your, uh, comfort with technology, Excel, Word, Outlook, um,
That will be.
Online applications?
I'll be a hundred percent honest. That will be my worst downfall. Am I familiar with it? Of course. Whiteinfield Water, it's all computerized. We use, we use, although it's a different type of thing, we do over there. So we, we're not even getting into it, but we have a software over there that is GPSed. So we monitor where boxes are, we can GPS stuff. So I'm familiar with that end of it. And of course, answering emails and going back and forth. My boss doesn't do anything verbally. So I, I'm, I'm familiar with that, but to really get into it, it'll be my downfall for sure, but will I catch on? Of course. I already use computers, so. I'm definitely more blue collar than I am white. Which some towns appreciate that. Yeah.
I was looking through, uh, the certifications that you have.
Yes.
Do you have a hoisting license?
I do.
You do?
Uh, a CDL Class B air brakes, um, Class B hydraulics, backhoe loader, uh, catch basin, roadside mower.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep. Everything's all up to date. I just actually did my DOT test Monday.
Oh, good.
And so you know where I'm at. Whiteinfield Water does randomly drug alcohol test, especially since that incident. So.
Yeah, can imagine. Yes.
So that doesn't, doesn't matter when it comes to management. I'm still there too, so.
And you have a current physical that you're in good shape and.
Yep.
Healthy.
Yep. Yep. Literally just did it Monday. So.
Part of it, all part of it. Okay, good.
You, you have to keep your CDL, so the DOT.
Yeah, yeah. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
John, do you have any questions for the board?
You know, my number one question, I'm sure this is, this is Worcester County Retirement. I just have to ask because I made that one mistake. No, I, I, you know, I'm familiar with the area. I've done a million car shows here, but over the years, when you guys have car shows here, I'm, I'm still, I know the area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Roting our road.
Oh, no, that wasn't me.
No, you didn't do that one, huh?
No, my car's too valuable to do that kind of stuff. No, no.
Anything else?
No.
No, I'm all set.
All right. I'm set too. Thank you for coming in.
Yes.
Be in touch.
All right. It was nice to meet you all.
Hey, thank you so much.
Right. I'm good, Dan.
You too. Fifteen minutes, we want to recess?
Yes. Yes.
Forty-seven.
I hear all that before we talk.
I didn't hear anything.
That's why I turned.
Hey, Harold.
Hi.
It's going to be recorded and since we get going.
This is Don.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Let me introduce you.
This is Erin.
Back on the record at two forty-nine with Harold Blacker, our candidate. Harold, just give us a background on you as a person.
Working for the town for ten years full-time. I think it was eight years part-time, then went to pound Kevin, that worked construction and worked on farm.
I'm just looking at your resume. I didn't realize you worked the gangle.
Yep.
Yeah. We're going to go through a series of questions and think. Take your time. Can you describe your experience in managing a highway department maintenance project or a budget or do you have any, any, um, experience with chapter ninety or the grants?
I have not done any of that yet. I mean, I'll learn it and I know Kevin does all the bids coming up.
Yep.
Seasonal bids coming up in just a few months. Maybe I'll be able to look on and help turn some from him. I have not done much of the paperwork side of it. I've always been doing the outside stuff.
I recall last June you were, I was on vacation, you handled the bid. We had the meeting.
I just came and overlooked it and it was it. On vacation, he did all the paperwork.
Okay.
But I did not do any of the paperwork to set it up or anything like that.
Yeah.
He'd asked me just to take some notes and send them back to him.
Okay.
Okay, um, how do you prioritize tasks? And, um, pick the resources that you need to ensure efficient, um, highway maintenance, uh, operations? So how do you prioritize?
Depending on what most used piece of equipment. We got to make sure that's all ready to go and keep. If it's a snowstorm, you got to make sure the trucks are all set to go. Make sure they're all just all fluid checked and we don't want anything, try to catch anything that could break down during a storm. We can see to prevent any breakdowns. Storms are the most important because we got to keep the roads clear.
How would you ensure compliance with safety regulations when you're doing the highway maintenance?
We have to try to stay close to the weekend with OSHA, all the OSHA standards because the trench safety.
Yeah.
Keep spoils back on the edge of the trench. So we don't want any collapses or anything over five feet in your trench box. Keep everybody, do anything we can to keep everybody safe and make sure everybody's always safe. Want everybody to go home at the end of the day.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, um, Hal, can you share with us a time when you may have had to resolve a conflict or a disagreement with a member of your team?
Can't think of any off the top of my head that we've had. Done pretty well.
We managed to work well then with, with the team.
We always get along pretty well and.
Good. Well, that's good to hear though.
Think of anything, any disagreements or anything that we've majorly had off.
How would you stay updated on new technology and best practices with highway department?
Try to go to some of the highway meet, mass highway meetings to see what the other departments are doing. Follow some, try to follow some stuff online. Stay, try to stay up to date with.
And you do that now?
I watch, I don't go to the meetings too much. I will try to watch some of, I follow the mass highway group online.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Awesome. How do you approach long-term planning and development of highway infrastructure such as roads, catch basins, bridges and the highway department building complex?
Keep, we're going to keep an eye on the roads to see which ones are breaking up and falling apart and prior to, priorities, which ones will need to be. Attended to next.
Okay.
Keep an eye on the building to see if there's any maintenance needed. The yearly services, services of all heating system, cooling systems. And catch basin, culvert, we gotta check, inspect those before we do the roads, so keep an eye and periodically check them to make sure they're not. Any, no, under being undermined or anything's fall deteriorating on them.
So even if you have nothing on your immediate list, you take time to ride around the town just to check on certain areas that could be problematic?
Yes, we drive around looking if there's any trees hanging or anything. If there's any trees or anything that looks out, we notify governor. Governor, see something.
Okay, good.
Try to keep people active on stuff that we see it and.
Can you provide with us for an example of a successful cost-saving initiative? That you've implemented in a previous role?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head, to say I haven't been in the leadership position to be in the.
Because most of your work has been here.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay, good.
I've always been under the watch of somebody else and.
But I would think in in a way, some of your cost saving is that you do a lot of the mechanical work?
We call around for the prices and try to find the best price. For the parts and.
And you can pick the best price that way? Okay.
You do some of the work yourself?
We worked, we do some of the maintenance, a lot of the maintenance, and we always bounce ideas off Kevin on what we. We always work together on some of the bigger project, take away his ideas and.
Okay.
But you're putting in elbow grease, which actually saves the the town money?
Yes.
How do you effectively communicate with stakeholders like elected officials, community members? What are some skills or methods in which you would do that?
Could either be phone call or send an email as needed if it was something bigger. Sometimes we do text messages, be more professional doing emails, which is documented.
Can. You share your approach to managing and mentoring staff within the highway department or even within the fire department as a lieutenant?
Try to talk to them, help through the situations, if there's any situations, work through everything together, keep it calm and collective.
Next few questions are a little more technical.
Okay.
Why is it important to pre-treat the road surface prior to a winter storm?
To try to keep the, keep the snow from bonding to the road if it's too cold.
Okay.
What type of precipitation do you find is the most difficult to work with and how would you work with it and treat it?
Ice is, black ice is the most thing. You know, it can be real slippery, you got no traction, leaves just snow. With snow, you can have some traction. But obviously, I've heard, you always want to stay on top of that, but sometimes they sneak up on you, the. With the storms, you'd be always gonna stand on top of them.
How do you treat black ice?
Let's see, and it's salt mix. Because salt will, it melts the ice away and sand will give the traction.
Okay.
What's the lowest practical working temperature for rock salt?
I believe it's fifteen. Not positive on that, but it's somewhere in that area.
You're positive.
I know Kevin mentions it a lot. Learned a lot from him.
You know what the state standard of measure for rock salt use per lane mile and by pounds? What that would be?
We were just talking about a couple weeks ago. Is it one forty-six? We were just talking about a couple weeks ago, I think it's one forty-six, but it could be.
Final answer?
It's not exactly, I think it's close.
Okay, you're a little off, two eighty.
Although we wouldn't have known.
There is no way.
But just talking about a couple weeks ago, dude.
Does the board have any follow-up questions for Harold?
Harold, what would you say your level of comfort is with technology, Outlook, email? Excel, online applications?
I do, I play with it. I'd be a little rusty because I haven't done a lot with it. But I do some with it. And I was telling some applications, I got, I don't have real written writings, so I went on and figured out, I was able to paste. Go in and type my name in the application and stuff, so I can get around in it, but I'm not super efficient. Probably take some classes later on so I can get more efficient with the computer stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
I'm all set.
Harold, do you have any questions for us?
You so?
No.
Familiar with the town?
Think so. Yep.
Do you have a hosting, hoisting license?
Yes.
You do. I figured you probably did.
I also have my more at least. You're with the real more.
Mm-hmm.
Especially more.
Yes, yeah.
If there were a piece of equipment that you had a magic wand? That we would get that we don't have right now, what would it be?
I think we're pretty, for what we do, we're pretty well off. Robbed by rescue, if you're nice, we're doing a little nice, nice of doing ditches, but the backhoe does sufficient.
Have you ever written a grant? Or any, for any services or any of your pieces of equipment that you need? No? Okay.
That's something I'm gonna have to learn.
Yes, yeah. And chapter ninety, I've worked with chapter ninety also.
I'm gonna have to learn all the insight, more of the, and all a lot of the outside stuff and paperwork and all the bookwork.
Mm-hmm.
You have to learn all that and.
Okay, and we just got notified today that it's going online. Anything with chapter ninety now, it's as of May second, has to be done online. So we've been letting everybody know that too. Nope, I'm all set, yes.
All right, thank you for coming in, Harold. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can relax now, Harold.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just came in today.
Yes.
Person or?
I don't think so. There were some concerns.
I have a lot of concerns.
Yep. And I think between the three that we interviewed today. I feel as though. The interaction, personal interaction. I would feel comfortable with one of the three today and then I wouldn't, I'm not sure about the latest one. From the, for next week, eventually.
And there was two just that showed interest on indeed, one of them being the one that I. And then the other one has not provided resume or application like I asked.
Well, it's April.
Yeah.
We need to get something. In stone for July. If the board wants to. Hold this over the weekend. We have two meetings next week, three.
Anyway, it's a Friday.
We can make a decision then.
I'll do my best. You know, I'm gonna read over everything and all the notes and everything.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Your week.
But the the nice thing is that this is a tool. Which where we ask the same question of everybody.
Everybody.
If we scored it one to five, we should come up with an objective.
Yeah. Yeah. And this format also fits into the study that was just done.
Okay.
So.
It's a very good tool. I I like that.
Yeah.
And it's nice and concise.
There were more questions that I eliminated. But, yeah.
So am I gonna put this for the twelfth, the day for after the interviews with the assistant town clerk? For possible.
Could be a possible vote Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or just.
Friday, agenda, or do you want it on a Monday or the Friday? Well, not Monday because it's too late for Monday. Well, it's always updated, I guess.
Okay.
Since we're gonna be here for the other anyways. So agenda for four.
Trying to get it settled so we can get to work.
Mm-hmm.
Possible clue. And if I may, I just want to inform the board that there were three applicants for the assistant town clerk. Two of them have confirmed their times, one being eleven, one eleven thirty, but the third applicant. Is, does have a job nine to four, and it's her, I think her last or second to last day and wants to. Follow through with her prior employer. So cannot do until after the thirteenth, so I don't know how you guys.
Should you do Zoom?
I will ask if that's a possibility.
I mean, I I don't imagine it'd be more than a fifteen to twenty minute.
Okay.
Interview if she were able to do it during a lunch break.
Okay. I will ask. I was gonna suggest the lunch hour would be a good time to be able to do it, and if she can do Zoom, it's. She's working too far away from town and can't zip in and out again, but the Zoom would be a a very good way.
And we could always, maybe beforehand, if she wanted to try it, make sure her technology worked on a cell phone. I'm sure we could help with.
Okay.
Yeah.
A dry run.
I will let her know. Get back, but at least we have, the board has two of, for sure, that have confirmed.
So do we want to close the indeed ones just so that we don't get any more applicants at this point?
Yes.
I wouldn't, I I wouldn't end it, but I think you can suspend it.
Does the board have any new business? Old business, any updates on anything?
Yeah, just making progress with the fiber. National Grid is a monster to work with. You know, Maribel, how many times were you on the phone trying to get an answer?
I, yeah, have you had any?
So I'm closer.
Oh. Did you even get through to them?
I did.
I got.
But I got a special number for.
Well, I did too.
Some kind of connections.
Yeah.
Yes, I did too, and I didn't get any further from there.
So I I've already received two emails.
Oh, good.
So, yeah, there. And I believe I've I've answered all of the questions that Blythe had on the grant.
Good.
So. I'll.
She's already set to working on it?
Yeah, she's got everything.
Excellent.
Yeah, I sent her the paperwork signed and.
She sent me like ten questions and I reached out to CM Geeks, to Phoenix, and I answered some. The only question we had was the details. Would the town be requiring details for a day in front of the library? And then as they went, they would go down.
Old Brook.
And then up.
To school.
Up towards the school. So that was the only question, and then how many days should they budget for detail pay? So.
So the project for fiber?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
It'd be two bucket trucks.
So you figure in one officer? I would say just if you were gonna budget for a detail officer, I would. Include any days that they're gonna be on the side of the road, especially on like Cobro, because it's gonna take up. Almost half the road.
Yeah.
And so when their booms come down, they have cones out, and these guys are up in the ladder, they have no idea what's going on down below, so you're gonna need at least one officer, I would say.
Okay.
One officer can handle two trucks if they're working in conjunction with each other.
It would be.
Yep. So, yeah, I would say one. One per two trucks.
And so they they estimated that they potentially could be on poles for up to six days, more likely five. So I was just gonna say six days.
Just.
Put that in the budget for one officer at the detail rate for six days.
Yeah, like I said before, if the town is paying for the project, which sounds like we are, then it would be forty-two dollars a hour.
And then. I believe that we've set up an ex, a precedent that. Applications like grants, Maribel can sign, there is a grant. Or the, for the revise, they're asking for us to sign what we voted on.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I have it right here.
So if we could get that, I'll send that, so they're they're ready to go. And it's a, it's a tight turnaround, but. We definitely would have to extend the one quarter with. Civic plus.
Yeah.
But if we get to get this to them today, they'll restart reaching out, and then next week they'll kind of give us kind of what. The steps would be, they'd want to meet with any interested stakeholders and give us an explanation of what's gonna happen. Over the course of the period.
And they'll be fully up and running?
They would expect that after that extension of the three months, that they would be able to be up and running. They create a slimmed down. Identical to what we have now essentially for fifteen hundred, but I said, let's just try to push towards. Getting the the full version. We didn't want to have to waste fifteen hundred dollars just.
No, we don't have the fifteen right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this would be the twenty-five thousand five hundred year one. Which we have.
Yes.
And actually, there wouldn't be any other internet or on the internet website cost. In twenty twenty-five, except for the extension of the three months, which would be a quarter. Of what we've been paying. So from operations from the budget, we'll actually be spending less. Of, out of the anticipated budget for next year.
Yeah. Twenty-five, six, seven, and eight is forty.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Excuse me, thank you.
And then I guess the other thing with the warrant closing next Friday. Should we, when we talked about the bylaws, should we try to prioritize the personnel bylaw? For this annual town meeting? If that were the only potential bylaw revision?
That's the only one now. But in the special, would probably be the rest of them.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we could try it.
We can try them one at a time and see.
Yeah, I I think that now that it's become more obvious, it's limitations. And we're going to the new payroll system, and we have a policy manual. Ready to be distributed, to ask the people to. Get behind having a more appropriate policy of the the board on HR versus a bylaw, which. Doesn't change very easily.
Too scattered.
Yeah.
Well, they're not meant to change easily either, but they do have to be.
But on that particular issue, the vagueness.
Yes.
Well, it contradicts itself in several areas when it comes to benefits.
Yes.
You know, it says one thing at the beginning and another thing.
At the end, yes.
Right.
So, I mean, this is where we're getting into all the problems we're getting into. Because it's not clear.
Yep.
The rules and regs are clear.
Yeah. So we would have to have a draft of that by next Friday before the warrant closes?
No.
Okay.
Well, we send it to council.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think having a, uh, if council gave us a recommendation on a, a personnel related bylaw, which basically says it's.
Good, working on that.
Okay.
Was that in the finance, being able to sit on other committees?
Oh, great. Okay.
By logic. We've already been working on it.
Okay.
And we got the wording already for the ballot.
To change the FinCom so that they can sit on other boards?
Yeah.
I don't think that's a particularly good idea, but we'll see what they come up with.
Yeah, see what they come up with. I, I asked them to.
Cause I, I I can't necessarily say that I would be in favor of that, not at this time anyway. And I know it requires more volunteers to try to step up and it is hard getting volunteers nowadays. But I, I still have that feeling that if you sit on the FinCom, you should have no connection to any other entity that's going to require money of the town.
But what about like advisory committees? Cause that was, I think, how it came up.
Internet advisory.
Yeah, which isn't really.
Well, we could put it right in there that they can sit on the advisory.
Advisories.
Yes, that, that I.
But not elected or appointed.
That was the problem.
But not appointed by the moderator.
Yeah, that might be better. Cause that's the one that raised the issue.
Thank you. I, I would appreciate looking that over too.
What Blythe, you're trying to, you know, Kevin Curry, Oakham. Twenty-one fifty old Turplake Road. Bylaw, you're trying to get on the Friday, uh, personnel bylaw change.
We're gonna change the bylaw to match the rules and regulations. The bylaw does not technically recognize anyone between twenty hours and forty hours.
Sure.
In another section, it says you can have vacation time, but it doesn't recognize you. How do you have vacation time?
And somebody at one hour of regularly scheduled gets the same benefits as somebody who worked nineteen hours or twenty hours. And I know that that's fiscally responsible to have something, I mean, no, you can't go anywhere and get sick, um, maybe sick time, but not PTO, working one hour a week. That's a pretty aggressive benefit.
Yep.
It, it needs to be tailored into what we have and what we're working with right now. And some of the things that are, keep popping up don't exactly fit into the little niche there.
Yep.
So we're trying to and make people a little happier maybe.
Plus it doesn't recognize any of the recent state and federal law changes of the past five years. And this was put through in twenty twelve, this bylaw. Actually was amended in twenty twelve, it was always there.
When's the last time these bylaws been even about, been updated?
Long time.
And that's why we talked about a bylaw review committee, um, and we had one applicant. And so then we were gonna try to work on it as a board, but then the budget and so unfortunately, um, I think we've all looked at them separately. I know I've gone through all of them and made recommendations, but in order to get the budget and all of those and provide, you know, input to the public as to the rationale, it's too rushed to try to get it by June. But I think getting this personnel one, we've found is issues have come up and I think that's the most important one.
That is, that is. I've read all the other bylaws too and I made a few comments and amendments to it and to yours. But, um, we'll discuss those too.
Yeah.
We'll come up with something that's very workable. And equitable.
Right there, one eighty-one Berry Road. You guys still looking for advisory committee members for bylaws? Is that something that you're still entertaining or are you just, I know you're doing the human resources aspect of it, but are you doing something to the entire bylaw? Book that we have?
We weren't touching zoning.
Right.
Or any of that stuff.
Yeah, no, it's just general.
Just the general bylaws.
And we.
Reason I ask is I'd be interested if they were still, you know, putting a, a committee together and I wouldn't mind being on that committee.
I mean, if we're gonna do it for the special, there is potentially time now to reopen it.
Yes.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And even if we gave our recommendations or our observations to that committee then to, as a starting point or.
Yeah, talk about it.
And they could rework them if they see fit, that would be fine.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Would give more input anyway.
Be updated, there's no question. And there's some stuff in there that you probably should add that we don't.
Well, that, that's what we're working on. We know we have to.
Big gaps, big holes.
You're right.
That's why we have town council too. Make sure that we don't miss anything.
Right. But I mean, what, what came out from the state that they said you should have a bylaw on that? We missed that memo or?
We could have.
We, we probably did. And it wasn't this board.
No, it wasn't this point, I was gonna say that.
Now, I'm not knocking any.
Yeah.
Not knocking anybody else, I'm just saying. Lot of things come out, it's a part-time board. Uh, predecessors all worked full-time jobs.
They did.
So they, they were limited in what they can do. Which is the whole reason we need a chief executive for the town. Yeah, I said it.
I second it. It is, it is.
No third.
It's, it's interesting with all of these outside vendors. And, and even state meetings and there's just, oh, well, we'll, we'll send it to your TA.
Yeah.
And, and when you go, well, we don't have that, they just can't get their mind around how you do that.
You operate a town without somebody in charge of day-to-day operations?
Yeah.
You're running a five million dollar corporation with three part-time people? Give me a break.
Yeah.
I'm done.
I'll have my say at another meeting.
Okay.
Don't worry.
Any, uh, public session, guys have anything?
Did you put a deadline on the, uh, applications for the hiring of the highway?
Yeah, we just did.
We just did.
We just closed it.
We just closed.
On the indeed, yes.
Well, yeah, I know you're closing on it, but the whole thing. So whatever applicants you've gotten, you have any more still?
Not that we're willing to interview.
Those, those cares.
Right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three twenty-three.
I have my part now, Pat.